It's time to start the January eleventh, Ellensburg City Council meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order. If you're not participating directly in the meeting, I ask you, please mute your, your microphones to avoid the background music. Roll call and note that all city council members are here with exception to John Sullivan, who was out today due to a few medical situation. And I see staff is here as well. So Kim, are you okay with that? With documenting the role?
I've documented it.
Thank you. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, move into the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the December fourteenth city council meeting and acceptance of the city accounts payroll report. To the council, what's your pleasure? You ready to approve those or do you have questions or concerns? If there's no comment, then someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Ms. Cowan, all motion approved, the consent agenda is shown.
Okay. Motion from Scott Cowan, second from Dave. Thank you so much. Please go ahead and vote using the icons below. Let's see, two, three, four. Okay, I'm watching here. Thank you. Moving on to guest presentations, I understand that Lieutenant Miller is probably coming tonight, but is not here just yet. So lots for her and feed her into the schedule as appropriate when we can. Albany Fire Department quarterly report, Chief Wooton, I understand you're here.
Yes, good evening, Mayor.
Good to see you.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
Perfect. All right. Good evening, Mayor, council staff. So our first slide, well, actually, before I get to the first slide, I wanted to introduce two guests that I've asked to attend. Deputy Chief Chris LaBelle and Deputy Chief Kyle Romi. I have two deputies and they are those people. And I just wanted, let's see here, if you, I can't quite see if you have your cameras on there, Chris, Kyle.
I can see them both. In fact, I recognize them.
So over the next year or so, we'll probably start sharing some duties with them and they may attend the meeting and give this report. So I just wanted you to meet them and see them before they come and give a presentation. So with that, you can see on the first slide that we had 24 calls last month in the city of Millersburg. Altogether, we're at 166 calls for the fiscal year, which is up 10% from the previous year. So increase we've seen across actually all of our districts. In fact, the, the entire department, we are up 16% over the year or this year. So things have been really busy recently for our department. In fact, at the end of this calendar year, we set a department record where we ran on 11,248 calls for the entire, for the entire calendar year. So our people are working hard and doing, doing really a great, great job. So even with the increase in calls, you can see that your response times are staying pretty flat. And I think part of that is inch and 15 spends most of its time in Millersburg proper or in, in the station and is only coming into Albany when there really are calls. So doing that, we've been able to maintain a really level and good response time that matches up with the response times in the city. So we can go to the next slide. It's your type of calls, I've shared this with you before. One thing I'd like to bring to your attention is fire alarm activations. I'm going to knock on wood, but we didn't have any fire alarm activations in the month of December that we had seven in this last quarter. And out of that seven, six of them were just to two different facilities and both of them were clustered. So they were having issues with their alarm system. We respond generally we'll help them or they'll reset the alarm. And then, you know, a couple hours later or the next day, the root cause, the root issue still exists and the alarm goes off again. So I know that's something that you all keep an eye on and I just wanted to kind of dive into that number a little bit. But I knocked on wood, December, no call, no fire alarms, but I did hear a fire alarm the other day in Millersburg. But that's to be expected with the amount of industry that you have out there, commercial buildings. So we can go to the next slide. I don't really have much to say about this other than providing it for your own curiosity of when calls are occurring. I did find it interesting though, when I, when I was looking at this, so I guess maybe I do have something quick to say about it is weekends are busier for you where it seems in the city itself Saturdays aren't our busiest day, but it is for you. And then time wise, the time distribution matches up with, with basically all of the districts that we provide service to. All right. How about the next slide? Okay, so this one, we, I didn't have the numbers for December for inspections. So I apologize for that. And then we actually haven't really had very many since the last time we met, any community paramedic referrals. So you know, that's a good thing. On the safe, fire and life safety evaluations, I met with our fire marshal today and we have somebody on light duty who is out doing some inspections. So we'll probably see an uptick in that number and we'll try to get some businesses that we haven't been to yet. But we have to strike a balance because people need to do their business and we don't need to get in their hair all the time. And so, you know, we, we try to take a measured approach and how often we visit, visit businesses. And that coupled with, you know, with our staffing, what are we available or able to actually accomplish? So there might be a little uptick in that number here in the next couple of months. And the next slide. So I just wanted to update you on our COVID-19 response. So I believe I mentioned this the last time I was in front of you about when the, when the Delta variant was going strong, we saw a significant uptick in the number of COVID responses that we had each day. There were some days where we'd have upwards of five, six or seven COVID calls. Some of those are a mix between interfacility transport, so from one hospital to another. And, but many were from people's homes. Generally, they were people who felt short of breath and thought they would get through it. And then, you know, eventually feeling short of breath is a scary, a scary feeling. And so they call 911 and then we provide oxygen and generally transport. Well, with this current surge, the numbers are significantly high. I just looked actually before this meeting and I think Lynn County reported, I believe, 162 positive cases today. So to give you perspective, there was only one or two days during the Delta surge that we had numbers like that. And we're still, you know, not at the peak of this latest variant. On a positive note, and this is completely anecdotal, so you know, and I am not a scientist at all, but we, we haven't really seen that correlation of increase of positive cases with a lot of responses for, or a lot of 911 responses. We are seeing some interfacility transfers from one hospital to the next with COVID patients, but not, but not so many from people's homes. Let's see here. And also, you know, I'm not sure if you're completely interested in this, but we are your, your fire department. So I feel compelled to tell you that, you know, we are making plans. OSHA has, or the president has implemented a mandatory testing requirement and it's right now caught up in legal battles and probably will eventually be heard by the Supreme Court. But nonetheless, as a department, we're making preparations for that to potentially pass or, or be legal. But I do want you to know that our stance on it is we've encouraged all of our employees to get vaccinated and actually 86% of them are. But we want to, we have been and we want to continue to be employee, an employee friendly fire department. So, you know, we're trying to, we'll figure out ways how the people that need to get tested, we'll figure out ways to get them tested so they can keep their jobs and we can keep delivering the service that we, that everybody has become accustomed to. Next slide. We wanted to thank the city of Millersburg for participating in the toy drive. City Hall was a drop off for toys. There you can see our old La France empty and then the picture next to it is all the toys that we got from the different drop locations. So just, I mean, this community is so giving Albany, Millersburg, this whole area is very, very generous. And you're just looking at the number of presents that people gave, you know, I think that validates what I just said. Also just wanted to thank you for letting us participate in your Christmas event, your parade. That's always a joy to be a part of. And I, I remember telling you this last year, so many people decorate in the city of Millersburg that you're kind of becoming a, a community for people to drive through. And I know I loaded up my adult children, my wife, and we went and drove the streets of, of Millersburg, which is kind of creepy because we're driving around nice and slow by everybody's house, but it is Christmas time, so they're probably used to it.
Well, that must be one of the ones in the, in the sheriff's report.
I could have been. So next slide. And the next slide is just if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Shane, I would like to thank you and the fire department for participating in our parade. I mean, it wouldn't be the parade without the fire trucks up front. So I really appreciate your op, your department, your office, your firefighters joining us.
It's a pleasure. And you know, early on, you know, I remember talking about this, you know, we really want Millersburg, Albany, our rural districts that we serve to really look at us as their fire department because we are and opportunities to plug into the community kind of, well, it kind of can make the difference between somebody feeling a part of something and versus somebody who just calls us when something bad happens. We prefer to see people in the good times.
I'm, I'm pretty convinced that this community is very proud of the fact that you guys are here.
We're proud to be here.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments for Shane, Chief Wooton? Awesome. Thank you so much.
Have a good night, council mayor.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. It could be mistaken, but I think the only public here is Kevin and Lori. Happens to text it. Could be wrong. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment? Or questions, concerns? There's an opportunity at the minute, at the end of the meeting as well. So last chance for comment for right now. Very never move forward then to council member and staff comments. Council, any comments, questions? I have a few then. I was able to attend the event committee meeting last week and I actually said brief report out for what they got, but Scott was out of town unable to attend. First of all, keep in mind that September 10th is the date for the celebration and the car show, all combined, one event. In fact, the committee members right now are giving up and getting ready to attend local car shows throughout the region between now and all summer to get flyers out announcing our event as well. So we get them thinking about coming to Millersburg. One of the big ticket items that we're dealing with now, we'll need to be dealing with is expanding the committee. We've been talking to this for quite some time now as crunch time trying to make it happen. We need some support with our committee, given the growth and activities that we're doing. I believe the number is four different committee members for which there will be specific criteria or capabilities that we're looking for. They are looking for, for such things as managing, managing the run, for example, which takes some specific knowledge to be able to do that and do it safely and correctly. So things like that, we'll be looking for people with, with skill sets that support the needs of the committees. That's coming. I'm going to suggest to the committee, as we look at committee membership and the tasks and so forth, that the council participate in managing the, the information booth. I suggest that for a couple of reasons. One is a great opportunity to meet with the community. I've been there a number of times with committee members come up with questions or comments and concerns. It's a great time to interact with them. And then in and of itself, I think is a good reason for us to do it. So I'd hope that we could split it up among ourselves for the 10 hours or so that we're there and maybe one or two guys together working that throughout. So please put that under your calendar and push back if you don't agree. We don't push back on what I'm assuming you're going to be there. It's also a good help for the, for the event staff itself. So all right, moving on to some other things. Yes.
Yeah, it is count. Just to comment on that as well as just to, the big, a big push like you were saying is getting the, the additional volunteers and committee members. So something is to be aware of for councils that we are working on that structure. I reached out to Jenny today and, and will be helping more with that as well. And I, and we might, might try to pull you in mayor as well, just to get an additional, you know, head on it and just perspective. But yeah, the, the, that will, will need some help from staff potentially to announce that and to publicize that. I'm not sure what that looks like and how we've done that in the past, but I just wanted to add that into the conversation about the celebration committee.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. In fact, I talked to Jenny after you did and she's going to talk to you about sometime Friday if we can do it.
Yeah, I, I just need to check schedule, but Friday afternoon probably would work for me.
Okay, thank you. Some, some positive events that I want to talk about. One is stormwater management. You guys, if you feel, think back over recent years, have we have struggled with flooding roads, especially on Millersburg Drive? We've come a long way. Thanks, thanks to staff and their management of consultants for the stormwater master plan, the work that we've done to follow, the work we've done with managing stormwater runoff with the new developments. I mean, we've had two major storms in the last six weeks or so, and we've done very, very well, thanks to that help. So thank you so much to staff. Also the snow removal that was accomplished, I think last week at West Track and Time Fair, but our staff took, basically took charge and let and made it happen for the first time in the history of the city, I believe, where we've had road readers out while in snow. We've got some positive feedback regarding that as well. So thanks again staff for, for handling that. Anything else for council, from the council or staff on this top area of the agenda? Very none, they will move to the city manager report, fire station project.
Look, now I'm going to cover the fire station update for you.
Great. The last couple of weeks, there's a whole list of things that have been done during the Christmas week, especially with the snow. They actually ended up taking that week off just because all the subs had to travel. And so this has all taken place since then. I won't go through the whole list, but as you look at the upcoming work, I'm not sure if it's really reflected in this list. So from our meeting this morning, I think you'll start to see the outside looking a little different pretty quickly. They'll be putting on the metal panels, the concrete, free cast concrete panels, and then the, the higher up concrete panels. Finishing, the roofing's pretty much done. There's a little bit left, a little bit of finished work there to do. So again, I won't read through all of these, but there's a lot going on. Do you have any specific questions on any of these items?
Had a neighbor asked me today, why does it take us so much time to work on the roof? I couldn't answer.
Couple of reasons. The main one being they can't, they don't want to finish out some of those roof areas until after they finish the adjacent wall because we have some steps in the roof. So they don't want to be walking all over that roofing once it's down. So they're holding it back from the, from the joint where we come up to a wall. You want to add anything about Kevin?
Yeah, that's, that's the main purpose. And it was really watertight and once they got, there's a membrane underneath it. So it's a, actually a three step roof and the metal is the last of, that's the biggest reason.
And they're finishing, I mean, the flashings and the gutters and all of that final stuff. There's a lot to that. So that's been going on for a while and they're continuing to work on that, which is finishing out all the edges of the roofs. But we have extended the schedule by 20 working days. So our completion date is now June 28th. I think we talked about this at the last meeting that we were going to do that. Fly chain issues, they've also had some schedule impacts from COVID with different subs being out for different periods of times because they don't have staff, either because they have it or because they're covering other jobs where the crew has it. So that's the schedule.
Do we have a delivery date for the doors or still, is that still an unknown?
The overhead doors is February, March.
Yeah, I don't know if we have an actual date, but we have a timeframe.
Okay, okay, that's, that's better. I thought it was, okay.
Right. It's not so much getting the doors themselves in that holds things up. It's that other things can't be done until after those doors go in. And that was, that was part of it.
One of the things we would like to do, also just keep in mind is we're looking at maybe at the beginning of the work session on the 25th, doing a tour, starting over the station, do a tour for council first.
You're good.
Here's the financial update slide. I believe we have last council meeting, we've had another payment, sort of 47% of the total project cost. December was a little slower. We have their next one in right now and we're reviewing it. So we'll get that out soon. I think that's the, that's the end of the fire station report. Are there any other questions on it? We can go on into the next part of the project updates. The water management conservation plan, we've talked about this a couple of times. There's not much to, new to report on right now, other than the draft is completed. I did my review of it, some comments back while they did their internal review and we're getting ready to submit it. The only other agency that's affected is Albany, so submitting it to them for their review and then it will go to the state in February. And again, we'll present it to you at a later date. It's not a report that there's any input needed on it. It's more just a report of what our system is.
And then, as the mayor mentioned, we did have a snow event, December 26th through 28th, we received a total of six and a half inches. We did have a snow plan that we had put together and it, which will ultimately become part of our continuity of operations plan. And as a part of that, we established primary and secondary levels that we would look at clearing roads. And so we implemented that and actually had that done. They were able to complete all of that in about an eight hour time period. So probably do some updates to it. I think that initially we talked about three inches. So what we saw was really the first day there wasn't any need, but the second day we had another four inches. So on Sunday, I think we received two and a half inches and then Monday we'd received almost an additional four. So going out and looking at the roads, Alexander was, had a lot of rutting and stuff in it. And that's when we said, let's go ahead and bring them in and had them plowed. So the streets that did end up getting plowed were the streets that you can see here in this map as well as the map that had the secondary. Went ahead and did those as, as well. They had it completed in about an eight hour period. So and it's including clearing of not only city hall, station 14 Jefferson's ramp. And we actually ended up doing the parking lot at city hall as well at the park as well. So unless there's any questions on that, we sent that out to you earlier so you could see what was involved with that on there. So what we'll be doing, we're working on some additional annexes and like I said, the coop plan, the continuity of operations plan. Just a little bit of background on that, because we're really in a major emergency with our close working relationship with Albany for services for our water and wastewater and then emergency fire services EMS and hazardous materials. And then with the county for law enforcement, we're really, we've talked with both Lynn County and Albany's emergency management. What we'll do is, is have a continuity of operations plan because we would never be in a spot where we'd have really our own emergency operations plan. We'll continue to work under the counties, but we'll talk about steps that we need to do if we need to activate that and what we would do to make sure that our operations are going. But a lot of it's going to be coordination, but there are things such as snow removal and other things that we would need to be doing with regards to roads if we had a major earthquake, looking at our roads and getting sure, making sure they're passable and I think so. Those are things and we'll talk more about that later this year as we, we'll come back and share it with you. Any questions?
We have a quiet council tonight. Okay.
I just said, again, to echo what the mayor said about the snow removal. Yeah, I, I'm thinking that is maybe the first time we've done that in the city and it was, I've heard a lot of really positive comments. So nice proactive move, city staff, appreciate it.
Our, our biggest concern, you know, if we hadn't, you know, it was really difficult to tell what was going to happen, which is always the case here in Oregon when we're dealing with snow and ice. But based on what they were predicting that we were supposed to see that night, they said we were going to see temperatures down in the teen and look at where the roads were and the rutting and stuff we had. That could create a lot of issues and a lot of problems and concerns. And that was one of the reasons why we went ahead and said, after driving that we need to, let's go ahead and, and get that done so we can ensure access. And that's our main thing is that we can get access into neighborhoods if we needed to in an emergency.
Yeah, I think, I was going to say, I think the county has come out before and done some work, but, but actually was, yeah, I think, go ahead.
The county's maintaining Old Salem Road, so and they were doing an excellent job. In fact, they plowed before we started and then they will catch concern usually on the way out of town, but it's on, we didn't put that in here, but we have their map. I think it's a third level for the county on it. And sometimes they'll catch Millersburg Drive as they come in. It didn't this year on them, but they will catch concern. And if they're not busy in the county and they do it, they will come in and do some of the others, you know, based on, but it really depends how busy they are with what they're doing. I will say the county did an excellent job on maintaining Old Salem, plowing and sanding of it, so.
Yeah, nice work.
I'd like to also mention that I'm observing this, I know others are as well, that our maintenance staff has been really stepping up in a number of areas proactively as well. Everything from helping us with the Christmas decorations to the event to snow support on, in around the city, which I personally did not see, but I've heard about. I think in general, we, we've come a long way in recent months in terms of our maintenance support. And I for one really appreciate it. Would like them to know that I, even though I've told them, I appreciate it. I think, you know, officially, I, I would like to come air, make sure that they understand that we really appreciate the work that they're doing.
Randy and, Randy and Dustin worked with the contractor, were out with them on the, and overseeing the, what was doing based on, on the plan. And we also had some, some sand delivered to city hall that if we needed to, because they were talking about, we could have some ice events. We had a plan in place, go out and sand some of our intersections so that we wouldn't have people sliding out in Old Salem, but it wasn't, wasn't needed. We did have that in place and they were prepared and Randy was keeping an eye on those and we were talking quite very early. So Randy and I were both in most mornings, pretty early, driving and taking a look at, see, to see what we needed to do. So, and I will, I would just echo what the mayor has said. It's very proactive on, on their part now and looking for things and planning and making sure we have. And if you get a chance, they're still working on it, but if you haven't had a chance, stop by sometime and take a look at the shop and what's taking place in there. You probably won't recognize it.
Correct. Okay, anything else, Kevin?
Not on that, no.
Ready to move on now to city attorney report? Forrest, you, you ready to go?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Matt, did you receive the updated version this afternoon?
Matt, did you receive the updated version this afternoon?
We did. I don't know if Kim had a chance to get that out to everybody, but we did.
Okay. Do you have a slide? Are you going to pull it up or not?
I can pull something up. It's not on a slide, but we can pull it up.
Well, I put together a slide for him. There was a next slide and the headings were all the same based on his previous memo and his current memo.
Sorry, I didn't realize there was another slide. Hang on.
Or isn't normally for the city attorney's report, but this time there was. There you go. That's his slide.
Oh, this is it. Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I thought you had.
Sorry, I was doing something on the screen and it moved it. There you go.
Okay, I thought you were going to bring up, bring up the document I sent to you. That's fine.
We can. Yeah, I'll grab it.
I think that would be easy to do that. And it'd be the one I sent to you this afternoon around 1:00 PM. So so thank you. And we'll, we'll, when that gets up here, basically, so you'll recall a few years ago, we started implementing. A time when we will just review annually the open meetings and records requirements that the council needs to go through. And I will go ahead, we'll pull this up. It's a one page document really and a little more than one page. I'll read it. You folks can read it as well. We have a signature. Location that I'll next time you're in City Hall, if you can go ahead and sign off on that, Kim has that all prepared. That way we'll get your signature that you reviewed this, we'll put it in your file and it will hopefully protect us in the future if we ever have some any. Allegations against us. So and the other thing that I've implemented as well, and so this is a little different. I revised this a little bit from what I've read to you in the last couple of years. And the other thing that I've done is I prepared another document. That Kim is going to send out to all of the our city commissions and committees. And we'll send it out to all of those individuals as well. And it's basically this very same document. I haven't ever had the opportunity to meet with the like the planning commission or the events committee or any other committees that are out there. To go over with them, the open meetings, guidelines. And so this is it. This is what we'll be sending off to them as well. And I just want to, for them to be advised about it. I probably will not ever meet with them in person and go over with it with them. So I'm just hoping that when Kim sends it out, they'll look at it and they'll contact me if they have any questions. But just keep in mind that, you know, planning commission has to comply with all of these rules. Events committee has to comply with all these rules. Any commission or committee that's put together by the council needs to comply with these very same rules. So I'm just going to read this verbatim. If we'll go back to the one for the council. Let's see, do you have the one for?
I don't because I didn't, so this is the one Kevin just forwarded me. Somebody's got it. I can get it up.
Kim has it.
Yeah, sure.
Kevin got the updated one. I know I got the updated one.
I just sent him the one on the.
Okay, I just forwarded it to Matt to verify to see if he needed it. Matt, do you have it?
Oh, yeah, I'm opening it right now.
Okay, I thought you did.
Yeah, if you want to.
And while they're doing that council, one of the things I would just mention is we have, we will update this. Majority of this information is in our employee, in our handbook that we go over and that we give. Committee members. So under our assistant commission committees, member and staff manual, this is all addressed. We'll update that. But all of this that Forrest has is in that. And that's one of the things we go over with. And when we reviewed that with the committees, when we this went into play into. In 2019, we revised it in 20, August of 2020. So when we have new members come on, we also go over this with them and give them a copy of it.
And the plan will be also every, we'll do this every January, continue to do this every January with the council. But we'll also send this out to any commissions and committees as well annually and all the members. So let me just review this. The mayor runs the meeting. The mayor opens the meeting and conducts the meeting pursuant to Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Procedure. Oregon Public Meetings Law is a public attendance law, not a public participation law. The council determines the amount of public participation. Votes or approval of any council business may only occur when a quorum is present and done in a public open meeting. So let me stop on that. The question is, what is council business? Well, is council business having three people or if it if it has anything to do with running of the city. That's really council business. So if it has anything to do that, any relation, that's council business. So if three of you members are together, counselors are together, that's technically a forum. But then you folks are say over at the mayor's house, you say, where do we want to go eat? Well, certainly, you know, that's not public business, so that doesn't need to be in a public forum. But if you, three of you are together and you decide, what are we going to do with the parks in this situation? What can we do with the tennis courts? And you start talking about that, that's really not supposed to be discussed that way. And you can't really come up with a decision there because that's a quorum and that's discussing council business. And please break in if you have any questions for clarification. Review of Oregon Open Meetings Law. Other than during a council meeting, do not discuss council business when a quorum of counselors is together. That includes via text or email when a quorum of counselors is involved in the text or email discussion. So for example, the mayor can't send out to two other people and say, what should we do with the tennis courts there? And people respond saying, here's what we should do. Begin to get, because again, that is essentially a quorum of counselors doing some business. Now, if he sends a text saying, where should we go for lunch? That's not business. You don't have to worry about that. Number two, don't discuss council business with other counselors via written communication, email, text, letter. If you discuss council business with other counselors via written communication, email, text, letters. That written communication, email, text, and letter must be maintained and not destroyed for five years. Discussion by email, text, or letter between or among counselors may violate the Oregon Open Meetings Law. Council staff may send one way communication simultaneously to all counselors, but counselors should not. This dissemination of information by staff is not considered a public meeting, but rather a dissemination of information from staff to counselors. This dissemination, disseminated information from staff does not violate the Oregon Open Meetings Law. But nevertheless, must be maintained by each counselor for five years. Retention of correspondence and notes to comply with an Oregon records request. Any written communication, email, text, or letter that a counselor sends regarding council business. Must be retained by sending and receiving counselor for five years. So again, another example, if the mayor sends off something to one of the counselors saying. You know, I I've got an issue. I'd like to talk with you sometime about the tennis courts. The mayor needs to keep that email going out or text or letter correspondent. And the receiving counselor also needs to keep that as well for a five year period. Please retain all email, letters, and handwritten notes made for your purposes. I.e. notes written on documents provided in the agenda packet are distributed during a public meeting for five years from the date of authorship. Three, very important, your notes pertaining to any business of the counselor or of the council are public records. And must be provided when requested in a public records request. So again, I know I reiterated really the two main themes on here is just be careful how you communicate. If there's a quorum present and retaining your documents. I know I hit that a couple of times, but that's really the highlights and that's what I just want the takeaway to be. Are there any questions regarding this?
Do you have more to review after this one?
That's it.
I'd like to comment. You reviewed the procedures and processes for the counselor, council members, which is no. No doubt in my mind, but what we are, we are definitely complying.
Okay.
But you're also going to say this also applies to the planning commission, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm pretty sure they're fairly well in sync as well. The problem comes, I've got a couple hours to think about this. We're going to try to apply this to the event committee.
Okay.
That's going to be a tough.
Okay.
If you're, if we're really saying that applies to the event committee, I'd like to bring some reality to it. First of all, you got a bunch of volunteers who are not making quasi official or quasi, what's the word? Cause official or official or executive decisions, they're simply putting on entertainment for the community. Okay? And with COVID, all their meetings, which is once a month, it's by Zoom or video. In order for them to communicate, they communicate all the time on with. Text and email all the time. Okay, there's many members.
Okay, they ask a question. Are they communicating regarding city business?
The event.
Okay.
They're planning the events. They're going out, putting up signs. They're going to go talk to the vendors. They're going to go put up Christmas decorations. They're going to go do, create a float. We're going to organize a parade on and on and on and on all year long. Okay? There's no inner room. We're going to get their group of volunteers to keep all those messages. Okay, so I just don't see it happen. Secondly, we had a discussion today about series of emails. It started out with as a result of a decision made at a meeting last week. Jenny went and asked for comments regarding the, I know you've seen these, the job descriptions, simply asking for feedback. Well, that began a process where people start cross talking to each other about other things semi related to it. Yeah, we can, we can improve upon that. But I'm talking to Jenny about it. But you've got to understand, we're dealing with a bunch of volunteers, having, trying to create a fun situation for the community. And in order for that to be successful, they better be getting along together and having fun themselves. That's what motivates them. If we try to bring this down in black and white and make them adhere to it. I I doubt we're going to retain them because it's just too much, too many roadblocks for them to try to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish. And I don't understand why these kind of rules need to apply to creating city events. I mean, yeah, there's some money involved. We've got two city council members monitoring that process. They heavily is on helping support that. And being the the go between between council and staff and committee. It's and Jenny has tried really hard to go by the rules in terms of running the meetings and 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 managing communications. But it just takes a while for them to go off on a tangent like they would do in a way communicating with one another. There's no, there's no harm in that. But yeah, we're breaking a rule potentially. I struggle with this kind of a committee having to adhere to 100% of these rules. And I don't see us being able to manage that. Now, I know I'm not on a limb. I know I'm probably wrong, but I'm trying to deal with reality here.
Okay, well, so so in my interpretation, the job of the committee is to. Is doing. Because it's a city event, the Miller's Day Celebration is. So do you agree with me on that?
Yes.
Okay. And and that group is making a decision. And if they're, if they are, so technically and legally, this is what the Oregon legislature has put in place. And they say that any group that is sanctioned by the governing body of the city, which is you folks. And you folks have sanctioned this committee. And if that committee is doing committee business or city business. And is discussing city business and making decisions, they need to comply with the Oregon Public Records and Meetings criteria. Now, I understand it does put a hardship on it. It does. There's no doubt about it. But unfortunately, I can't just wave a lawn and say it doesn't apply because it's going to be difficult to. To do and and so I don't know what the answer is other than. The downside, the downside is, is if we throw up our hands and say, we realize it's difficult to get this group to comply. And so therefore they don't have to comply. I, as the city attorney, don't want to say that because I don't want the buck falling back to me. And I don't think you, you mayor want to say that either. So it's just not good. So maybe we need to look at somehow that we can help them comply. And I don't know if that would be.
So Forrest and Mara, a question? I think where the big concern is when it's, when it's a reply all. If they're not replying all, they're replying to the original one. That's, that's not quite as bad. I think the problem is when you have a reply all and you end up with majority of the committee commenting on something, you now have a quorum where you're in a quorum. You know, if if they can take and limit it to not replying all and just replying to the originator of it individually. And this, you know, it makes it more difficult, but that.
I've already talked to her about that and I suggested that and we've had that discussion already. And Jenny will do, she'll do it. She'll, she always works to make it happen because we're working with people who aren't used to this kind of environment.
Yes.
It is difficult, but here's, here's, here's the bottom line. Well, that group will definitely work to make it happen, but they have to mess up someday and get off on a tangent. Okay, fine, move on. We don't need to create a big deal out of it.
Right, right. Exactly, exactly. We just try to try to adhere to things. Because you mayor and all the council members, you folks have been in situations where we've had, we've been inundated with. Public records requests and we all had to go back and sift through our email and our texts and all the messages we've had. And review or send them in and be the post about them. For example, if we were to have some serious event occur at the. At the celebration. And as a result of that event, the city were to be sued and we get some plaintiff's attorney after us. They're going to want the public records of all the emails, all the text messages, anything in writing. That all the events committee people have had over the last two years or three years. And for us to just throw our hands up and say, well, we just couldn't comply with it. We don't want to do it and we didn't do it. That's not going to look good on us. It really certainly isn't.
Scott Cowan, how do you feel about telling the group that they ought to keep all this stuff for five years? Is that going to fly?
Yeah, no. I mean, I hear exactly what Forrest is saying and I'm glad you spoke up, man, because I was thinking the same thing. So I I was trying to brainstorm, but basically. The the members, we've approved the the membership and that's how we're connected, correct?
Yes, they're good.
We're approving.
Yep.
They're under our umbrella. They're working under the council's umbrella.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think the committee members really, I mean. You know, obviously Jenny has to be part of that, you know, a lot of them are just there, they're just doing their thing. And, you know, call them whatever you want, but they're, you know, that's how I was just thinking if we could reduce maybe membership.
Nobody need to expand it.
I mean, right, I, yeah, members, official membership, you know, that's, that's doctored, that basically that we appointed. Because it's, it's really, it's the, when we appoint people to that committee, that's, that's the connection, correct? If we don't appoint the.
It's sanctioned by the city council.
Right. But if if a member that's not appointed or a, I don't know, I don't know. I'd have to.
Well, even if the, if the member's not appointed by the council, but somebody else brings them in, it's still going to fall. It's still going to comply.
Okay, yeah, then that that should set out. I think the best bet is just we educate, just like we did tonight, and we we educate to the best we can. In the sense of doing it, doing it, but I, it's going to be hard to comply. And I agree, I think some people might, if if we really hound it, they'll, they'll just like, I've already sensed that a couple of times with just in a meeting like, you know, and. And I know there, I totally hear what you're saying. There's law. Law is law, you know, and and but it it's a tough one with this group.
It is.
Forrest, a question?
Yes.
If the city were to support and we wanted to move the committee to a 501(c)(3). Could the city support and assist in developing a 501(c)(3) for the purpose of this? So that they wouldn't be necessarily be under this, they'd be under their own guise. And then the city provides support, you know, the financial support that we are now for that is. At that point, they would not be, the city, they wouldn't be under these restrictions. for that is, at that point, they would not be, the city, they wouldn't be under these restrictions. They'd have their own governance. Um, we would, you know, the council would make the decision that, you know, we're going to provide X amount of dollars to this group for these events. Um, is that something the city, if, if the council was so inclined to, to help address that, where none of the, you know, they wouldn't have the, um, the agenda issues. I mean, they wouldn't be the ones recruiting and bringing members in and doing that sort of thing. We do that. Is that something, is that even an option? Or is any, I don't even know if it's something the council would be interested in.
I believe that's a possibility, Kevin. It's similar to like in the old days, you know, we had the Albany Timber Carnival, back when we were young kids. Albany Timber Carnival, it was run by a 501(c)(3) essentially. City of Albany contributed money to that, but the city of Albany wasn't the governing committee on it. And they just said, money, do with what you want with it. So yes, you could force that off on something and most likely this, the public, as long as we are not controlling that committee and controlling the membership or anything about that, then we're okay. Your only concern is just though you have to make sure that you're going to give them money and you hope that that committee will spend the money in the fashion that you want them to spend. And that's one option, you know, to consider. Another option would be, I don't know if you want to do this, but every, you know, every week at 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM, every Thursday at 4:00 PM, you folks get on for a quick Zoom call meeting and you can discuss matters. And, but you just, so the other thing though, that, that's happening, I know you're, I presume you're publicizing these monthly meetings that you're having. Is that correct?
We are.
Okay. You would also have to publicize these weekly meetings so the public can come in on these weekly meetings if you want them. But you can have a
That's part of the dilemma with Forrest. These are young families with kids.
Yeah.
Sports, one of them's dealing with cancer, one of them's dealing with a sick dog. I mean, they've all got real life problems that are restricting their time as well. So communication, you, you communicate best you can with the tools that you got, given the restrictions you've got on your family and so forth. So it's a tough, tough process.
It is.
I appreciate what you're saying. And I, I guess, can I get a head nod from the council? Is whether you support staff and Forrest looking further into the 501(c)(3)? Anybody in council not support that concept moving forward? Just look at it?
Uh, this count, just my comment on it is, I, I just don't know enough about that and the 501(c)(3), what it entails and, and, uh, you know, for management, for treasury, for, you know, the, what that looks logistically for for the committee and how they would manage it. But, um, but I'm willing to, you know, that might be an option for sure.
One, one thing I could just mention real quick, um, I would, you know, that would be in the, the constitution and bylaws. That would be one of the parts of it that's on there. So Scott, you may not remember it, uh, when I first started with Albany Fire, the volunteers were actually a 501(c)(3). The city provided money to that every year, um, but they had their own and that was to get by with some of the funding and reimbursement that the cities couldn't do um, on that. And, you know, that went until we disbanded the outside volunteer program. But so I know cities have, you know, had tie-ins with that and those various ways, but I think that's where that would be. That would be based on what the, the bylaws and stuff, that would be part of the bylaws for that group.
I spoke briefly with Jenny today about that, asked her if she's having insight. She said, no. I said, well, we're going to talk about it potentially. And if we do, we'll kind of loop you into the process. And so she would not be surprised by it as well, if we do it. So I guess, one more time, any other councilors have any concerns about looking further into this?
So I'll look into it. Let me just briefly answer question on 501(c)(3) and as Kevin's correct, you know, you basically set it up and there's going to be, need to be a treasurer. There's going to be, need to be a secretary who's going to take notes on those things, you know, so it's a complicated process as well. So what you're doing though, is you're getting rid of the requirement of needing to comply with this Oregon open meetings law by going to 501(c)(3) because you're outside of our offices. But you're going to, there are going to be other requirements of making sure you keep the books correctly. You're going to have to have a separate bank account.
So it takes a lot of work to set it up, to make sure all those guidelines, procedures, bylaws, all that stuff being placed up front, which they time and somebody, somebody's effort and money and so forth.
And then if there's, if it, one quick question, and also I'm assuming then it, we're, they're not covered by, some goes, some happens. The city, the city's not on covering, you know, a, a situation that goes.
Correct.
So that's, they would have to have their own insurance, I would assume.
They, they would probably want to have their own insurance, I would presume.
Right.
Because, you know, they, if, so basically they can, if, if the, if the 501(c)(3) is being sued, okay? They can only sue the 501(c)(3) for the assets that are in that 501(c)(3). But they can show the attorneys, the plaintiff's attorneys will come out and show that the 501(c)(3) has not complied with everything. If they didn't take, uh, minutes at one of their meetings or didn't do something correctly, then there's the thing what's called piercing the corporate veil, meaning you're no longer protected by this corporate security uh, shield of a 501(c)(3) requirement. So they try to get through and then go after each individual for personal liability. So yeah, you're right, Scott, is that in theory it shields them, but most of the time it doesn't.
Let me try to, I guess, to try to ring closure for this point in time, can I ask staff and Forrest to identify the process of obtaining the 503(c) and identify the pluses and minuses of their doing that? What are the pitfalls? What are the constraints? What are the things we have to clearly accomplish to make it work? And so just so we can evaluate whether we want to take the next step. Does that make sense?
Happy to do that. Happy to do that. Try to get something back and we can hopefully report in a month from now. And in the meantime, we'll send that out to all the committee members, you know, the events committee and the planning commission and, and we'll.
And Scott, we could talk to, if we get a chance to meet Friday with Jenny, we can kind of fill her in then as well.
Yeah, yeah. No, let's definitely put that on your radar Friday afternoon. I'll, I'll send an email to you and Jenny.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Hey there, Jim.
Thank you. I see Lieutenant Miller has joined us. Beth, are you out there?
God's got some. Yeah, can you hear me? Sorry, I've been, I've been trying to talk. Yeah, sorry. Just, just real quick about this 501(3(c), um, or 501(3(c). My first thought's just, just sitting here, sitting here listening in and really I would, I would definitely refer to Scott and probably you and then Jenny and the rest of the committee of what they would want to, want to do, and then obviously Forrest. Um, that being said, listening in to kind of what the issue is, you know, that we're trying to solve by, by forming this, and it's its own corporate, corporation. Obviously, as Forrest started talking about, you guys have to, you know, there's insurance and we have to make, make sure that you abide by the corporate, corporation part of it as far as the minutes and so forth. Otherwise you have that corporate, corporate veil. There's a lot of, you know, negatives to doing that, you know, versus the issue that I'm, that I'm hearing. It seems like a small problem that, yeah, it's a pain. But we're trying to solve the small, small problem by opening up this big can of worms. So to the.
Potentially. Let's keep it in perspective. We have a group of volunteers volunteering to create fun events for the community. And roadblocks continue to pop up. This being the biggest one. And it's just like, it's frustrating, but they just want to, they just want to help the community. Yeah, and it's, it's frustrating. That's it. Okay.
Isn't it really down, down to, I mean, is the main issue here like the, like the text, text messages? I mean, is, is that the, the record keeping part? Obviously, when you guys have meetings, there's, you know, a, a recording of it, right? Kim's taking notes, somebody's taking notes. So is it really just text that we're talking about?
No, this began as a result of Jenny sending an email out, asking the group to provide feedback to a number of job descriptions.
Okay.
And, and did not say, well, you know, come back to me, reply to me, only don't spread it out. Well, that propagated a bunch of cross communication between members about, about committee members and, and jobs and so forth. So it, you know, to me, it's not a big deal. I mean, who in the world would want to care about that?
Yeah, I, I agree.
That's what, that's what occurred. It was not by the numbers. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, and that, that's, that sounds like just a training issue, basically.
It is, it is. It is, but you know, what.
Or get them all city emails and say, hey, hey, communicate for, you know, this business, you know, for the eve, event stuff by this, this email only. I mean, it seems like.
The reality is, it's the mindset. They're not running for office. They're after trying to create fun events and they're not used to this kind of stuff. And you start doing it, it's like the kind of, you know, the best thing they're going to do is roll their eyes at you. The worst thing they're going to do is say.
Well, and that's why when I'm, when I'm listening to this, I'm, I'm thinking in my head of all the different stuff that comes along with forming a non, nonprofit. And, you know, all the more stuff on their, on their plate, you know, like say, record keeping, book, bookkeeping, insurance. I mean, there's a lot of stuff. And we want them focused in on, on the eve, event, having fun.
Exactly. I would, I would just. I would just, there are a number of other things, not just this that we have ran into. Um, being a government institution, there's a lot of things that the committee has wanted to do or put limitations on that we can't. Um, or if it was a private, they can't. Um, we had a number of things occur this last summer that popped up. So there are, like I said, there's pros and cons. I think that's what we need to look at. There are, you know, as a government entity sponsoring a, there are things that we can't do. That I, I know the committee has expressed an interest that they would like to do, but as a government leaning, we could. If it was a 501(c)(3), they could. Um, so those are, so there's a lot of pluses and minuses there. I think it's a matter of looking to see, is it worth? You know, is there, what those type of things, and it may turn out to suck.
No, is, is that's the case, Kevin? That makes a lot more sense to me. I was just thinking, if it's just this, you know, record keeping.
Oh, no, no.
We're opening a big can of worms here. They can have a lot of issues later. So too.
It's purchasing and much of the stuff that goes with it. That's, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on. Thank you, Scott. Uh, I didn't mean to cut it by short. Any other council comments? Lieutenant Miller, are you there? Miller, Beth, are you there?
Can you hear me?
I can barely hear you.
I know, I'm, I'll try to speak up. I don't know where the speakers are in the computer that I'm using. So if you're able to hear me, hopefully enough.
Yes.
Turn my volume up more.
Bear with me. I'll see if I can't find a way to.
I can hear you.
Got okay enough to, okay, so.
Turn my volume up.
So for the month of December, um, Millersburg saw obviously double digits in the traffic citations again. Um, and eight traffic warnings. There were, um, 159 complaints or, um, cases investigated. And, you know, we were up for Millersburg, seven and a half, um, hours, um, from the contracted hours. Uh, there wasn't a ton of criminal activity for the Millersburg in December that was investigated. Um, there was quite a few from the report, as you see extra patrols from deputies for speeds in areas. So some traffic enforcement for speeding. Um, as well as just extra patrols of the neighborhoods in the Christmas time. Um, I know just from social media and stuff, it sounded as though, you know, fireworks galore during New Year's. Um, but there was just one call that we responded to for December on the 29th, right before midnight. So obviously, the January report might reflect differently from the calls. But I know we had a deputy roaming the area looking for, you know, the culprits. And I know this is a routine problem in Millersburg. And we try to get a heads up that the city lets, you know, the deputies know, myself or Steve in the past, um, that these areas are a problem and what we can do. So, you know, maybe for Fourth of July, the next kind of big go around, we can see what we can do to try to help nip that in the bud. Cause I know the community members are pretty tired of it. Um, other than that, I don't, you know, updates from the sheriff's office, we're just like the rest of every law enforcement agency and probably other employers out there trying to hire. Can't hire fast enough, of course. Um, but we are doing a big hiring event. Hopefully it's a big turnout on the 29th, um, Saturday. Out in tangent, um, for multiple disciplines of patrol correction, nursing and dispatching. Um, and it's, you know, no, no cost to anybody to come test, run the ORPA, even have their oral board interview done that day. Um, and of course, the more incentive for laterals is they just have to interview and bypass the rest of that process. So um, we'll see. It's first of its kind for us and we're excited to see the turnout from that. So is anybody, I know that Steve Framby, Sergeant Framby's been working on the Loves data and breaking it down with, um, now under Sheriff Micah Smith. And, um, so he told me to kind of leave that if there were any questions to him um, for the future, because he's working on that still, um, for what you guys had questions about. Other than that, anybody have questions from the month of December for us or for the sheriff's office?
So you mentioned Mike, and I couldn't hear everything that you said. Maybe Kevin already knows what's going on. Is Micah planning on coming out with data? Is that what's?
We are. So Sergeant Framby's, myself and Janelle are meeting tomorrow afternoon and talking about the information that he had initially from Loves. And we're going to pull up the additional and get the report ready. So we get stuff ready for our meeting on the 25th. I also had discussions with OSP. Um, we're going to see about getting some information. OSP goes out quite regularly also. And we're told that we could probably get information from what they are doing out there as well. Uh, one thing I just would mention on that, wanted to see what your thoughts, I think we mentioned the last time. But I think we'll probably reach out to Loves and see if they can sit in, have a representative, so they can hear what's, and see what's taking place. So that they know when we are having discussions, um, about options, why, why this discussion is taking place. So.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah.
You might want, you probably know this better than I do, but I'm pretty sure that person would have to come from outside the area.
Yeah, it will be a virtual meeting, so I don't think that will be an issue.
Okay, all right.
All right. Well, any other questions for the sheriff's office?
Any comment from council? Guess not. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Take care.
You too, Sam.
Thank you.
And moving on, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. We're going to new business. First item is health insurance plan rates. Kevin?
Yes, uh, information only, but just wanted to let you know, we have received our update for our insurance rates, uh, which will be due for renewal on April 1st. Aldrich Advisors, who is our broker, has notified us that, um, our Providence Health Time rates for this year will see a reduction um, on it. So we're seeing on the, um, on our family plan for the non-HSA, which is what everyone currently has, we're seeing a 5% decrease. And you may recall last year, that change was 3.8% for the HSA. And, um, we had a point, 0.3% increase on, um, our health insurance last year. So we actually budgeted this current fiscal year, uh, for the increase in April, we budgeted a 2.5%. So, um, we're not seeing that. And of course, that's only for a three month period, but it'll be nice because that will reflect in what we'll be looking at budgeting for, for next year. We do not currently have anyone on the enhanced, but we do have one employee that's expressed an interest in at least taking a look at that. So um, we will see that. Essentially what would happen is if we have anyone, you may recall, when we went to our current non-HSA plan, we kept in availability for someone, if they wanted to, to look at non-HSA, a step above that, they would just pay the cost difference from what ours is. So the monthly for a family will be 1654, dropping from the current 1741. So anything above that, um, if they want to take that enhanced plan, that would be the employee's responsibility. Any questions?
Okay, what, what are the rates?
Uh, Janelle.
All right. This is just a quick update reminder for everyone that, um, based on the scheduled increases that was adopted last year, we went through the, the rate structure changes. The first rate increase is going to SACT February 1, 2022. So those will show up on the April bill. It will be the first time that people see them. So water 3%, sewer 7.5%.
Okay. I got a lot of, we spent a lot of time on it last year to get to what we did. So hopefully that's pretty much ingrained in everybody's mind.
Yeah, we just wanted to remind each of you of that though, because even though we, you know, we have people that have moved in and stuff. So if people, if you get contacted, once that goes into place and they contact you saying why, just all of it, so we can remember the, the why when that question gets asked. Just all of it, so we can remember the, the why, when that question gets asked.
Housing needs analysis, understand Matt's probably doing that one?
That would be Matt.
That would be me, you bet.
So thank you, uh, chairman, fellow commissioners, um, wanted to walk through this. We wanted to give the city council a chance to preview our draft housing needs analysis and to provide some highlights from that for the city council. Now, we commissioned the housing needs analysis because we saw the city growing and quite frankly, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to fit the twenty-year growth projection inside our current city limits. And so we commissioned the study as a way to understand that much better and know if we had to expand our urban growth boundary. Because as you all know, we have a legal obligation from the state to accommodate the twenty-year growth projection. So we're gonna get back to the rest of that in just a moment. Uh, the structure of the study is largely dictated by the state. The state is, uh, very strict on what goes into a housing needs analysis. And, uh, this study reflected what the state's structure. The data that goes into this is largely, uh, taken from a regional area and not necessarily all within just the city limits. And so a lot of the information you might have seen in that analysis is really reflecting the region as well as what could potentially be going on in the city of Millersburg. Again, they're taking it from the national level to the state level, to the regional level, and then to the city level. And so a lot of the information you might have read in there is really trying to tell you trends that are going on in larger areas, not just in our city. So the study is really set out to essentially do three things, go ahead and give me a click there. The first thing it's doing is it's trying to analyze, uh, what land we have in the city available to build on and how that could possibly accommodate that projection. Go ahead, Janelle, the next one. The second one is it reviews the trends like we just talked about and the demographics of the region in the city as well. And, uh, how we need to or don't need to cater to those trends, couldn't hit the last one. Lastly, the study compares the twenty-year projection, which we get from, uh, Portland State University. And it says, okay, here's the land availability we have, here's the projection we're supposed to see in the next twenty years, how do they line up? And, uh, go ahead and hit me with the last one, Janelle. What we came to the conclusion of in the analysis, the final verdict was the city actually did have the capacity. To accommodate within our current city limits, the projection for the next twenty years. Uh, we're gonna talk a lot more about this, uh, in future city council meetings, because this is gonna have some rippling changes in some other things that we're looking at. And there's a lot of details in that study as well. Go ahead and hit the next slide there, if you could. Now, there's no action needed today from the city council, we really just wanted to bring it forward, so you could all get a sneak peek at what that analysis said. We know that there is probably a lot of information in that analysis that's hard to swallow. Uh, trust us, we went through that analysis and drafts went back and forth with the consultants. And we tried to cater it to the, to use the voice we wanted to use in our city. And even that said, it still has some parts that are a little bit hard to swallow. We've been working with Forrest and I have been looking into this, and when it comes down to the city actually accepting the study, we're not legally obligated to adopt this analysis. We can receive the analysis instead. That might sound silly, but there's actually a universe of difference between adopting it and receiving it. Especially because we just got a grant to start working on our housing element of our comprehensive plan. This would play into that quite a bit. Adopting it would mean that we have to pretty much implement everything in it, in our comprehensive plan housing element. But if we just receive this study, this study can, uh, provide information and data for our housing update, but doesn't necessarily have to build up everything that this report sets. So that concludes, uh, what I had to say, I'm guessing there might be some questions.
Counsel?
Yeah, this is Kevin, uh, question, I, I was just curious, it says we have enough inventory. How, uh, how close were we not having it? Are we, are we have a twenty or is it maybe even projected twenty-five years or where are we on that?
Well, that's a great question and that really plays into kind of the devil that's in the details. Uh, that housing needs analysis explained that we had a seven point eight percent, I think is the number, growth rate, uh, since two thousand until now. But then going forward, using the growth projections. It's plugging in the projections which we thought were woefully low. It's saying there's only a two point five percent growth rate or something like that, uh, going forward. And that's something we've tried to bring up with Portland State University, when these numbers come out, we have, we actually have a chance to provide input. And we said, you guys are crazy, that's really, really low, we're much higher than that. Well, know that your staff here is still planning on the future in the city with the seven percent growth rate, not the two percent growth rate. Um, it was close in some categories for sure. Um, in our multifamily, uh, we really had to play with some of the assumptions in our mixed-use area, which if you'll remember, is across the street from Loves up there. Uh, where we think we might eventually see a hospital and we've got some higher density, we're allowing to have happen if there's some day. We had to really play with that, but we did have enough, so we didn't have to go out of our way to accommodate more high-density anything in this city. Uh, the single family was about right on target. And, um, as, uh, Jim brought up to me earlier, uh, what's also important to consider is most of the Milrite Farm property, the properties that's on the west side of Woods. We didn't take that into consideration at all for this analysis.
Right, right.
Left that out of the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got agricultural comp plan designation. And we did that. A couple of years ago, because we thought there might be a need to, uh, potentially remove that area from the city if there was no desire to grow there. Because we thought we would need to grow and if they didn't want to grow, we might have to cut them out of the city. That's one of the main reasons they got an agricultural comp plan designation. Well, now we see that, uh, those opinions might be changing. And so we're looking into the possibility of, of reverting that, uh, that comp plan designation from agricultural to residential, which will give us even more capacity. Uh, to stick more along the lines of that seven percent idea and not the two and a half percent idea.
Right, yeah, uh, did you, we talked about that actually property on the west side of Woods a number of months ago. Um, I thought with potential long-term development such like that, but, um. So yeah, that, that was interesting, they, definitely the growth caught my attention, the la, the, the low volume of growth. Does, with that, uh, do we then, is there any reason to explore? Uh, you know, we had talked early on, very, very, uh, um, you know, early on in the conversation about expanding our urban growth boundary, or at least doing a, um. Wasn't expanding it, but sort of, uh, holding maybe a, uh, what's the term, yeah, I see, you know it.
Well, yeah, we were looking at a few things, we were looking at swapping property.
Okay.
Swapping the property west of Woods or property somewhere else, maybe that's across the freeway, maybe it's to the north, we weren't sure yet. Um, and we also talked about possibly making it an urban reserve area, which shows the. Where we plan to grow someday. That's still not off the table, we still might do that, but we technically, legally grow our urban growth boundary unless we were out of room. Well, the study helped us understand that. Now, just because the study says we can accommodate it, doesn't mean we're stuck. If growth all of a sudden picked up and, and heck, continued to stay at the rate it's going right now, and we did run out of room well in advance of that twenty-year limit. Could we then change our urban growth boundary? Absolutely, you bet. So this is really just information, uh, to help us plan.
Right.
Janelle, have you wanted to share also?
Well, it's along the same lines of what Matt just said, I think we might have shared before that just doing a really quick estimate of the, if the rate that we've been building houses. Building land over the last few years, were to continue, I think we were looking at three years, three to five years, all of that land would be used up. Now, we're not, we've slowed down a little bit right now, but mainly that's because of willingness to sell, is our understanding. So that could change very quickly and I was just gonna say what Matt said, it does, we'd have to revisit things then at that point. But we, we have to use those numbers from the state for this study at this point.
Yes.
So we're stuck with, with that at the moment.
And I would also mention, at the time that our urban growth boundary, which is now our city limits, was adopted by the county when that was first put in place. There is a urban reserve shown to the outside of that. Um, and if I remember, they, it's a square, it, it's, uh, goes to the east and to the north, and I think it may have gone to the west. Although looking at our infrastructure, trying to go west of the road tracks and service that area would be very difficult. Um, elevation wise, for, for, for that, so.
You have a map of that, Kevin?
It is, I, we have it, it's in documents, it's an old map, it's, I mean, it's a mimeograph.
I never seen that, yeah, that'd be interesting to see. I do like the idea of, of the reserve again and, and continuing at least to explore that option. For just our long-term, our long-time, you know, uh, just projecting that for, just, I think the more we talk about that and stuff, it's just smart for us to look ahead. Um, and then, and then lastly, I, I, I can't agree more with you, just of the receiving part of the, uh, study versus accepting and adopting. So I've said enough, I, those were my things that popped up, I might have more questions later, thank you.
And I would imagine Matt would answer this question, but I don't think anything has been changed to, to take that reserve. So I think that urban reserve is still shown in county records and.
When we went with the county, they said that was interesting, it showed some intent, but it wasn't in effect anymore.
Well, it certainly shows that there's a stomach for it, cause it was there before and re-adding it now would be just not much easier. And I've been talking with the DLCD about taking those first steps towards making an urban reserve. So we're well on the path of that and we plan on trying to incorporate that into our comprehensive plan update as well, at least giving a nod to the fact that we plan on doing that.
Dave, you got any comments, questions?
Yeah, there's a, I mean, uh, Plan B's always good, I think they have, so if we could, you know, solidify this urban reserve would be good. I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, we're already kind of questioning what the state comes up with for a growth rate. And then if you were to couple that with, and then, you know, w- willingness to sell a property that can change overnight. Um, and then, you know, if we were to develop, um, or, or, you know, use up all of our industrial ground with, you know, places that employ lots of people. You get two of those things to happen at the same time and that, that twenty years looks like seven or eight real quick.
That's right.
So I think, I think a plan, Plan B's always good to have as far as where else would we go if that, if that were to happen?
I think one of the realities would be that we have the potential here, if we were to see our large parcel, I mean, as large, you know, at high value and, and jobs come in. Um, you could very well see that drive, quickly drive housing in, in the community as well, and love what we've seen, so.
Scott, for the tree?
Yeah, so I would, uh, reiterate, but everybody's saying, especially about this urban re- reserve, I think future planning, obviously we're very fast growing, so this could all change quickly. I do think the Woods, uh, property there, if that develops, um, that obviously, or if something happens there, if we included that in the numbers, that would, that would give us a lot more land to grow into without growing the urban, the urban growth boundary. So I, I, I think that urban reserve may be, unless we have a large growth, maybe a ways out. Um, that being said, there was a few interesting, I don't know if everybody read this, but there was a few interesting, uh, facts on this that I, that I saw. Nothing really surprised me as far as the land, I think I kind of said that, just driving around town, there's a lot of vacant, vacant, vacant land. But a few things that was really interesting to me, uh, looking at this, I just wanted to reiterate it real quick, in case everybody didn't catch them, but, uh, just as more talking points was that, you know, as far as in, uh, places where workers at businesses in, in Millersburg live. And this is two thousand eight, eighteen, twenty-seven percent live in Albany, seven percent live in Al, or in Lebanon, four percent Salem, four percent Corvallis, one percent is Millers, Millersburg. So the people working at where our businesses are don't actually live there, that's, that's, that's kind of interesting to me. I, I, obviously there's probably a lot of reasons to that, so, um, where are people in, employed, most of them Albany, Salem, Salem bringing up the other part of it, twenty-six percent Albany, fifteen percent Salem. The one thing that I did see was kind of interesting too, um, that I honestly didn't know this, I, I wouldn't have guessed this. And that is the, um, population that we have as far as their age, I'm just going back up here to it. So our largest population in Millers, Millersburg is people under twenty. Twenty-nine percent of our popu, population is, is under twenty. Now, the next interesting, the one thing to me that I saw here, which again, I would have not have guessed this, was that our smallest popu, population is people over sixty.
Overall, it's a pretty good spread overall, however.
It is, but it's.
All the age groups, pretty equally spread.
True, but if you even look at like Millersburg versus Lynn County, so Millersburg Lynn ca, versus Lynn County for under twenty, we're at twenty-nine percent. Lynn County is at twenty-five percent is their average, Oregon's twenty-three percent, so we're significantly higher than the rest of the state, including Lynn County. If we go to population over sixty, we're nineteen percent for Millers, Millersburg, Lynn County is twenty-five percent, Oregon's twenty-four percent. So they're, they're more even, right? The baby boomers versus, uh, mill, millennials coming up, I think is this newest gener, generation name now. So, um, so just, just, just kind of interesting as we're, you know, as we make decisions as a city and where we go as planning, is to just bear, bear, bear that in mind. I don't think that was the case, I think when I moved in there, I would have guessed we're probably a fifty-fifty split, that was a guess. I'm looking at it now, that isn't the case, at all.
Yeah, I would just caution, um, this does not include the twenty, twenty census data. So this is estimates based on the two thousand and ten census, so I'm not sure how accurate that will be. Um, I do think when you look at, um, and I forget which figure it is, but they talk about in twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, about fifty-one percent of our residents were between the ages of twenty and fifty-nine. So if you look at that, what we saw between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, as far as those coming in, were fifty-one percent of those were between twenty and fifty-nine. So you could say that other forty-nine percent are either above fifty-nine or under twenty. So, yeah, I, I would just caution on what we're seeing there until we see the twenty-twenty census data come out.
No, and I think you're wrong, Kevin, I mean, yeah, the, the numbers that I was reading off there is two thousand fif, fifteen to two thousand nine, nineteen. Although driving through some of these new neighbor, neighborhoods, especially out, out off Woods there, out at the end. Um, seems like a lot of families out there, more than retirees. It's just a demi, demographic change, change that we're seeing, so I was just bringing it up, so it was just interesting.
No.
I wouldn't have guessed that.
You're right.
That's why we have more Christmas lights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. Those are great points, Scott, I, I thought, I thought the same thing when I looked at the report, I, I, it was very interesting to look at the demographic charts and just some of those numbers. Uh, it, those, the same numbers that jumped out at you, jumped out at me as well with, where people are working and all that dynamic. And probably one of the reasons why, you know, Millersburg is so popular is because of that Salem poll. And you, you know, people are able to split, you know, between Albany Corvallis, or they can jump up north and go to Salem, you know, and so definitely interesting, uh, uh, report. Um, and, and the information that was gathered.
Yeah, no doubt.
Well, you all are kind of concerning me. It sounds like I'm the only guy that got overly reactive, uh, and, and made the comment, there's no way to roll, I would approve this, but I'm wondering now if we took a vote, if you guys would all approve it.
Oh, oh, that, oh, no, Jim, sorry, no, I was going, I, I, I agreed with everything you guys had said coming to this point. Obviously, this is information only, there was some, there's some other issues what they came up with that I wasn't. It's a whole other conversation, conversation.
I pretty well dumped on Matt already and talked to Kevin, Janelle, but it, my first time going through this, I had to walk away from it, I didn't even finish, I just couldn't stand what I'm reading. Went back two days ago and early in the morning, you read it and you got almost four pages of notes here. This is a bad document for, for, I'm concerned, there's no way to roll, I personally would approve it. Uh, it's based upon small data, it's based upon assumptions, and they say that themselves, and they, they use the word assumption, and they're based upon trends and not necessarily pertaining to our city. Yet they want to turn around and convince us we need high-density housing and, and, you know, multi-story and, I mean, multi-family housing and apartments and all that stuff. Based upon what?
Nothing tells you that, okay?
And I don't need to dwell on it any more than that, I think we, you know, I've been bailed out by Matt saying we don't need to approve it, so good. I won't, I don't need to unload all my comments, but this is, to me, as a, you know, a very low percent of it is really focusing on building the land. The rest of it is trying to convince us around state land use goals and, and that's basically how I view it, so. Enough said, I don't like it, um, just set it on the shelf and move on.
So move.
One, a couple of.
Some positives, kind of, I, I know where you're going, I just read this, uh, statistic here. Uh, the ratio of median housing value, value to median household in, in income, in two thousand, we were four point zero nine. We actually decreased to three point nine, nine-two, we're the only city to do it. So at, at least as far as what, what they show here in the whole state, so, so we're actually becoming more affordable per our incomes, so that's, that's a good thing.
But so fortunately, we had to pay for this.
The, so one of the things.
Recognizing to unrecognized this? Is that what we're doing?
Well, we're not recognizing it, we're receiving it and.
Oh, receiving.
Not tonight, not tonight.
Not tonight, not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
One thing I would point out that I thought was very interesting, if you look at the median household income from Millersburg, eighty nine thousand two hundred eighty six, I would just point out that that's the highest, we're about twenty thousand, about twenty five thousand above any other community in the region, including Corvallis. Of course, Corvallis' median income is lower than Albany's, which is interesting. A lot of people don't think, realize that on there. So, you know, there's a lot of things. And unfortunately, as you will hear when we talk with you, and one of the things we want to talk about in the work session on Monday, is because this is, as I mentioned, and this is why I think it's important for our communities to be aware of what's taking place in Salem every legislative session. Because what we are doing here is based on what legislative action has taken place over the last twenty years, and what they have said, how we have to. They are the ones that have come in and set the standards that PSU has to use for growth. They're the ones that are coming in and putting all these things into play. And we're going to be talking about some other things that the governor has done this year through executive action with regards to climate change and some of the things that she's wanting to see, and they're pushing and trying to get through in through regulatory, other regulatory agencies. So, you know, I think this is part of where we really need to take a, a strong effort when talking with our citizens so that they understand why we're having these challenges and why we're seeing what's in this document right now is here. Because what the state wants to see is the state doesn't want to see as a whole. They, they loathe that we have ten thousand square foot lots. Everything that we're out here should be thirty five thousand square foot lots. It should be affordable. That's their vision. They don't want to see ten thousand square foot lots and things that's here. They don't, you know, they're not looking at it from that same standpoint. So I think it's really important when we're talking, you know, to the citizens for them to understand that, you know, if you don't want to see, this is what's coming, whether we like it or not. Unfortunately, unless we get some changes in the state and change in that direction and allow cities to have that. I mean, we're seeing more and more of our home rule eroded, both at the state and federal level on things. So it's, it's, we had some real heartburn with things in here and having a lot of discussion, a lot of discussion on the fact that we need affordable housing. Well, you know, who's going to live in the affordable housing? Anyone that lives there is going to have to commute somewhere for work because we don't have a large, those type of jobs here that, you know, that those, that would drive that type of housing. I mean, you can build it, but who's, you know, anyone that lives there is going to have to commute somewhere probably for finding work. They're probably not going to be in that. So those are some of the challenges that we have, and we're going to be talking more about some of the things that is with the, the current that is coming out of the last legislative session that didn't get passed, that the governor now is trying to push through agencies by executive action. So.
I'll add to your chair when you hear what they want to do.
Kevin, you said work, work session on Monday is Thursday, right?
Thursday, yes.
Thursday, the thirteenth, and Tuesday, the twenty fifth. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments on Matt's masterpiece?
I didn't write it.
I like it.
I want to keep my, don't put that on me.
One thing I got feeding off Kevin and feeding off of yours, I just, I just have a hard time holding this back. And I'm just going off top of my head from reading this. But as I recall, the affordable housing part of it is they wanted to, you know, it was big focus on families that made between seventeen thousand and thirty four thousand roughly, thirty, thirty, thirty five, five thousand. But then they also said that the average income to be not cost burdened by housing was around twenty two dollars an hour, which would obviously be significantly more than, more than that. So it's kind of interesting to me if they push, you know, multifamily, you know, these town, townhomes, et cetera. They're saying the average incomes need is twenty two bucks an hour, which is, you know, forty fourish, forty five grand, grand a year, right? Versus, but we want to build houses for people who make seventeen to thirty five. I mean, so that's still not, they're still not solving that. And I do know the National Association of Home Builders is about two years old, and I know this number hasn't gone down, but for Oregon, said that twenty five percent of the cost of a new home is because of regulation.
Yep.
So, so we're not.
And it's going to get worse.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think that's low now. It's, that definitely hasn't gone down, you know. So, because it's not just regular regulation to the new home, it's not just the fees and the permits and the STCs and that, all those things, you know, feeding into them. It's also the regular regulation on the lumber, lumber company. You know, it's the new cat, cat tax on the lumber yard, right? So all of those, that housing, housing costs, and we're just, we're not even talking about that. So it's just interesting.
Unfortunately.
If I could drop those costs twenty five percent, I could solve that issue. So.
Unfortunately, the state has taken a one size fits every community. And what, as we pointed out to the consultants, when you look at what our median wage and stuff is here, we don't have a large commercial area. We have virtually no commercial area. We have Arby's and Loves. So, you know, we don't have those people, we don't have a large concentration here compared to what you see in most communities of service sector jobs. They're just not here. I don't know that we'll ever see them in this community with our proximity to Albany. So it doesn't make sense for us to have to use the same formula for determining what we need from a housing standpoint from that standpoint. Because if you put it out here, if you follow that, we do that, you're going to have them traveling someplace else, assuming that that they don't have the ability to, to work in a job that is at a higher level. So that's what's, that's what's frustrating on that. I don't disagree with you, Mayor, on it, because they don't allow you to look at, at the city that's in an area. It's, it's a, they've essentially made everything cookie cutter to meet what they want to see happen throughout the state. So it's a challenge.
Can we wrap this one up now? You ready? Thank you. Good conversation. And thank you, staff, for doing this. I realize it's a poison pill we don't like, but yet, having, having it behind us, we know what it is now. We just need to be very cautious moving forward. I guess it's better to know this than not to know it. Thanks for your help on this. And I know the next steps could be even more tricky with the, with the pipeline. Closing public comment. I think it's still the Kevin, Kevin and Laurie show. If anybody else out there from public. Okay, no public comment? Any council comment, closing comment? I'm going to adjourn at this point at eight oh seven PM. The meeting is adjourned, and I will see you all Thursday at four PM. Is the, speaking of that, Kevin and Janelle, you talked about tour of the fire station. What is that at for or before?
That will be the twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
And that would, we would start at four at the station.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night, everyone.